Evening.
Salute flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few announcements. Welcome my fellow board members, staff, and others in attendance. We appreciate your patience and cooperation as we follow the guidelines of social distancing so that our June meetings may be held in person. Some of you may already know, but Ms. Horn is unable to be here this evening due to a death in her family, so please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. As always, time has flown. It is time of this time of the year that we complete the superintendent's annual evaluation. So Ms. Horn has scheduled a called meeting on Friday, June 19th, for us to consider Mr. Thomas's evaluation. An agenda, location details, and documentation will be shared closer to that date. Board members, just a reminder that we have until June 30th this year to complete our annual required training. As you know, TSBA had to cancel the in-house training sessions that were scheduled for the spring, but they are offering three online sessions for us to utilize. If you haven't registered for one of these yet, please call Terry if you need her for assistance. Okay, are there at this point, are there any changes to the agenda? Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, approved by Mr. Norman and seconded by Mrs. Satterfield. Now we'll have Mr. Thomas's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, a few brief updates this evening. First, I'd like to remind everyone that our graduation ceremonies for the class of 2020 will begin on Monday. As we previously announced, most ceremonies will take place at school football fields. Our Career Magnet Academy, Paul Kelly Academy, and L&amp;N STEM Academy will hold graduation ceremonies at Central High School. Graduation ceremonies for Ridgedale and KAEC will be held at their respective schools. Ceremonies will also be live streamed at knoxgrads.com and archived versions will be available for later viewing. I'm extremely proud of this year's seniors and all their hard work. I've been particularly inspired by their perseverance in overcoming unique obstacles that affected their final year of high school, and I look forward to celebrating with them. At the same time, we're working very hard to ensure that these ceremonies protect the health and safety of our school community. Graduates will be provided tickets for up to four guests, and attendees will be expected to follow precautionary guidelines such as physical distancing, wearing a mask or cloth face covering, and staying home if experiencing fever, cough, or other symptoms. And again, I'm really looking forward to seeing our graduates from June 8th all the way through June 20th, so 18 graduations, I believe, in all. I'd also like to highlight the next phase of our KCS at Home program, which launched this week. The summer edition of KCS at Home is available on our website and includes packets and videos for students in grades pre-K through high school, as well as videos featuring Knox County teachers. Our goal is to help families access material that was missed in the spring and will be reviewed in the fall. I'm very grateful for all the hard work for our teachers, administrators, and our central office staff that put into this initiative, and I hope our families will find it very valuable. I know that our students and families have many questions about ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and how it will affect the fall semester. We are monitoring the situation very closely in conjunction with state and local authorities, and we have developed a three-part strategy to help shape our decision-making. First, we've created a survey to solicit feedback from students, families, and staff. That survey is available on our website at knoxschools.org. Second, we have established a task force of community members from each board district that will be led by Dr. Jerry Askew, President of the Alliance for Better Nonprofits. We believe the task force will provide an additional layer of communication to guide our planning. And finally, we'll be working with focus groups of students, teachers, principals, and parents to seek insight from multiple perspectives about the fall semester. Our goal is to be prepared for three possibilities when school resumes in the fall. Ideally, students and teachers will return to the classroom as normal while embracing new safety measures such as physical distancing, but we're also preparing for two alternative scenarios. The first is a hybrid approach in which students would attend school part-time and receive in-person instruction from their teacher in a classroom. Instruction would be supplemented by students' teacher with remote learning. This could possibly involve staggering student attendance to allow for physical distancing and also provide for some extra time for cleaning of school facilities. The second alternative would be a strategy of full-time remote learning led by KCS teachers that covers new material and allows for graded assignments using electronic devices provided through our one-to-one initiative. We want to ensure that resources, plans, and procedures are in place so that the work of education does not miss a beat this fall, and I'm confident we'll be able to achieve this goal. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I missed a step. We needed to vote to approve the agenda. So, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have Great Schools Partnership, Knoxville Education Foundation update, and I believe Jonathan Schoonover, and do we have Mr. Aunt, okay, Aunt newly appointed Knoxville Education Foundation President Chris Letzos are here. Thank you for taking time to provide the board with an update.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's fun to say that for the first time for you here. Sorry that couldn't be that way.
I'm not the chair. I'm just filling in today.
For the interim for today.
Madam interim.
Madam interim, yeah. So, as interim president of Great Schools Partnership for the past seven and a half months, we've been going through quite a bit of a transition. So, really, if you rewind the clock about 18 months, we've been working to kind of negotiate and work through the relationship with Great Schools Partnership and Project Grad. And so, those two entities together are transitioning together to become one new entity. You may have seen the announcement before, but it's called Knox Education Foundation or KnoxEd. We have all of the executive team for our staff is here today. Going forward, I will be the Executive Director of Innovation. It's one of the roles that Great Schools Partnership played in the past. The other one that you're probably most familiar with is the Community Schools Strategy Initiative. So Cheryl Ball is here to kind of give an update on kind of things that we've been doing over the past, really, the past couple of months during this time of COVID. And then Ronnie Chandler, Executive Director of Project Grad, is here to kind of update us on things with that as well. And I want to introduce you to Chris Letzos. Before I do those things, the biggest thing that's on the agenda in front of you guys now, or for next week, is looking, I think it's C5. It's the transition of some of the, two of the key MOUs that we have with you, both with community schools and then one for a data analyst position, where we're transferring basically an ongoing MOU that we have from Great Schools Partnership to Knox Education Foundation. So, it's just a basically a name change. Hey, this was an agreement that we had with you here, and we're moving that over to KnoxEd. You'll notice that the MOU that you guys have with Project Grad is not on the agenda because the Knox Education Foundation is actually utilizing the federal ID number of Project Grad. So, that continues as is because it's the same entity that is going to continue. So, that's the technical stuff. I'll get that out of the way. Let me introduce you first, Chris. Chris, if you want to come up here. Chris comes from Tampa, and he is, brings a whole wealth of experience running the Boys and Girls Club of the greater Tampa area for, you know, he's been there with 25-plus years. So, I'll let him talk a little bit about himself. If you want to step up here, and then we'll introduce the rest of the staff as we go.
Well, thank you and good evening. Today's my first day on the job, so I apologize. I don't have much substance, but I'm excited to join this really incredible team at a time where our kids need as much support and help as possible. And my family's excited to be here, called Knoxville Home, and just looking forward to working on behalf of all students, all schools, and all communities here, you know, during these most uncertain times. It's when we all come together that kids know they have a bright future ahead of them. So, I'm humbled to be here, excited to get to know each and every one of you, and again, even more excited to be just a small part of this exceptional team. So, thanks for the warm welcome. Thank you for your support of Project Grad and Great Schools Partnership, and in the future, the KnoxEd Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, I'll have Ronnie come up. Ronnie Chandler come up and talk about the work that Project Grad has been doing over the past few months during this process or during this time of pandemic.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. KCS and Grad have partnered since 2001 to provide additional support for 7,000 students attending 14 urban schools. The majority served navigate low-income circumstances and represent diverse populations, including students of color, students from refugee families, and of various immigration status. Grad support is K through 16, kindergarten through post-secondary, focusing on career and college access through exposure, opportunities, experiences, resources, addressing barriers of basic needs, social and emotional stress, and providing post-secondary success coaching. We presented STEM for Kids in our Workplace Ready Training before the shutdown, but then, just like the rest of the district and the world, we canceled several events. Movie U, campus tours and visits, the Celebration Dinner, Summer Institutes, including a new Advanced Manufacturing Grad Institute, Grad Paid Internships. We postponed the Laptop Telethon. WATE has said that they do want to still do the telethon later in the summer. Just as others did, we had to move out of bewilderment and into the reality of long-term quarantine. So, we did a pivot, encouraging staff to pay attention to self-care and their own family while we provide continued support from a distance. We shifted to provide the essentials of survival for multi-generational families who were struggling, many in unstable circumstances. We put the KCS COVID link on our homepage. We worked with Ms. Campbell to help inform families who are often hard to reach. We assisted with the KCS meal distribution and helped identify district families with technology and transportation challenges. We provided porch delivery of weekend food boxes for students in the Backpack Program, collaborated with Central Hispano and Bridge Refugee, and joined a weekly Zoom call for youth serving providers. We also supported a couple of kids who had a parent die. We kept our eye on academic supports. We moved Grad AE tutoring online, worked with school leadership by Small Learning Community and with graduating seniors, developed original content on the Grad YouTube channel, including a K8 focus supporting KCS at Home. We mailed encouraging postcards to every student at both high schools, participated in school videos, helped deliver yard signs, and communicated with students who lost opportunities. On the post-secondary side, we supported those struggling with an online format, hosted a couple of virtual hangouts to reduce isolation, stayed close to students who are on intervention because of a GPA dip, and provided crisis support to scholars on the verge of giving up, and to those who could not go home when campus closed. Finally, we continue to inspire hope. The Grad College Board created a social distance car parade for 35 scholars from Austin, Houston, Fulton, completing higher ed inmate. The Grad team created a surprise video tribute for the 2020 scholars who would have had that at the convention center. And we have virtual sessions to keep graduates in close touch with their intended institution over the summer. And in the meantime, the transition team has remotely been working through 1,000 details to position KnoxEd for a great launch, so great work can continue, and even greater things are ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Next up, we have, her title before was the Vice President of Operations for Great Schools Partnership, and under that, the biggest initiative that we have there is community school. So, introducing now, again, you've met her before, but Executive Director of Community School, Cheryl Ball.
Hello. Thanks so much for having us today. We started the community school initiative in 2012, and we've expanded to now have 16 community schools in Knox County. There are really three main components to our model with the district that make it particularly successful. First is our team. We put a full-time site coordinator and part-time program assistant inside of each school. Even while schools have been closed, these site coordinators have been advocating and collaborating for the benefit of all community school families, particularly the most marginalized. The second component are the individual site steering committees, which are made up of parents, teachers, and neighborhood stakeholders, who have also continued to meet virtually. These committees lead the identification of specific needs and targeted solutions for each community school. In addition to serving as part of the leadership team for the school, our site coordinator works with partners like Helen Ross McDabb, the Health Department, and our childcare providers. But this team is coordinating with 275 partners across Knox County, which leads me to the third component, our community partners. These range from youth-serving, nonprofit, faith-based, neighborhood associations, businesses, social service organizations, and a broad spectrum of volunteers. We average between 60 and 70 partners per community school across all 16 sites. During the challenge of COVID-19, in less than 48 hours, our team secured a network of community partners to assemble, store, deliver, and distribute family meal bags across 17 of the sites where KCS was distributing student meals. Second Harvest provided the food, and more than 61,000 additional meals were distributed during those nine weeks to families. With the help of more than 50 partners, including local farmers, our Weekend Backpack Program has continued and expanded significantly, both in number and to include a broader cross-section of supplies, groceries, that includes fresh produce and eggs, and basic needs items. Our team is helping to lead the Tennessee Community School State Network with a focus on advocacy and best practices. We're launching a new approach to our needs and assets assessment across all sites and have continued to expand our data collection. We're very excited that we've initiated a third-party evaluation of community schools through the University of Tennessee Social Work Office of Research and Public Service, or SWRPS as they are locally known. While the full evaluation process will clearly take a couple of years, we expect to have initial details to share soon, and we're excited about that. Toward the beginning of COVID-19, one of our site coordinators, excuse me, learned about a mother who is visually impaired and was struggling not only with food, but frankly, lost on what to do and how to get help. Our site coordinator worked with community partners to provide food and get this family referred to a number of other support systems in our community. This also led to our team realizing the apartment complex of 12 homes where she lived was really all, they were really all suffering from food insecurity, and for many different reasons. So, she was able to utilize volunteers from a church and neighborhood association to package and deliver food to this complex weekly, and plans to continue this at least through the summer. That's just an example of peeling back the layers in the community development part of our work that impacts the entire community, which definitely impacts that particular school. While none of us know exactly what school is going to look like this fall, clearly, our team has been working to create new and innovative ways to continue our work on equity, collaboration, and community development. Thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl. I couldn't get the rest of the team to jump on the gray suit bandwagon, just the two of us. So, last, I'd like to just, and I'm not going to have her say anything or else she would get really upset at me, and you don't want your financial person upset at you, right? But it's Stephanie Jenkins, if you just want to say hello and wave. She's served, really, she's served so many roles, but two official roles, both with Project Grad and Great Schools Partnership for the past, what are we at now, 16? 16 and a half years. So, I think she's really excited to have back to just one boss, essentially. We've kind of combined everything together, and she's excited about that. Just a brief update on innovation. Won't spend long here, but just want to let you guys know that we've gone through the process. We, Great Schools Partnership, has served essentially as a catalyst think-tank, research and development arm for Knox County schools to help you guys do some of the innovative stuff that you can't do with public money and fail, right? We can, we can fail forward. We can learn through things and go through innovation cycles to help kind of move things forward, test things out. If they don't work, great, we'll push them aside. If they do work, great, we'll move them forward and hopefully help you guys to adopt them. The innovation team is really going to work forward to kind of move that, move that whole initiative forward. So, we've got, we've been working hard to develop some language around our innovation cycle. So, looking at needs, needs assessments, where are the needs both within the school system, identified by the team that works so hard with you guys, but then also from the community. What are the needs of our community as well? And how do we take that through evidence-based best practices? And then, how do we contextualize that to here? So, yeah, that's a great idea. It might work in California. How do we move that here to Knox County with our specific district, with our specific needs, and then implement that with a vision for essentially an evaluation plan at the outset? Like, when we finish this, we'll know what success looks like at the outset. So, walking through that whole innovation cycle, implementation, and then the last step is to evaluate and say, hey, did it do what we thought it would do? Are we ready to implement this and kind of take this either district-wide or beyond? Or is it something that we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out? That's something we're really excited, kind of moving forward with the innovation team to do. So, innovation, community schools, Project Grad, all under one house, KnoxEd, to be your one-stop shop to kind of support education within Knox County. Thank you so much again for the time. Thank you for us, giving us a chance to kind of update you guys on what's been happening over the course of the past year, past couple of months, the transition work. If you've got any questions, feel free to, you all have my email addresses. Feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call, shoot me a text, and look forward to having you guys all interact with Chris as well as we move forward. So, thank you again for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate you coming. And Mr. Letzos, we look forward to working with you going forward. Now, I want to make an announcement of the 2020-2021 Board of Education Student Representative. As Ms. Horn has informed us earlier, the process to select our Board Student Representative for next school year started back in February, and she had the privilege of serving as our Board Representative on the selection committee. This year, we had a total of 17 applicants from nine different high schools. After a blind review and ranking of all 17 applications by the committee, which included Ms. Horn, Secondary Education Executive Director Danny Trent, Principal Brad Corum, current Student Representative Noah Kelly, and Community Member Angela Fisher, the top four scoring candidates were moved through to the interview process. The four finalists, who are all rising seniors, were Blake Cragan of Farragut High School, Michaela Webb of Hardin Valley Academy, Abigail Lee of L&amp;N STEM Academy, and Kendall Patty of Powell High School. On behalf of the Board and the selection committee, I want to thank each of the finalists. The selection committee stated, as always, it was an extremely difficult decision. Following the interviews of the finalists this past Monday, the committee members totaled their interview scores with the application scores, and I'm happy to introduce to you our Board of Education Student Representative for 2020-2021 from L&amp;N STEM Academy is Abigail Lee. We will be sharing more detailed information about Abigail as she begins her term in July, but please help me congratulate and welcome her. Also, thank you to Noah Kelly for showing Abigail the ropes tonight and next week. As we all know, this is Noah's final month with us, and we look forward to celebrating him next week at our regular session meeting. Now, we will move on to our 2020 regular session agenda. Board members, just a reminder, if you want to speak, just pull down your microphone, flag me down if you need to. So, we will start with the consent agenda items. Does anybody have any discussion on, first off, C1? I think Mr. Dupler maybe wanted to make a comment about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, this, this item was approved by you in April, but when it was sent back to the company, Blackboard, they raised some concerns. They wanted their own agreement because this went through what we call a cooperative agreement. A lot of those such agreements are used by local governments and public school systems. So, that, they did not want to use that agreement, that they wanted their own agreement. So, we've spent probably the last 30 days going back and forth trying to create a specialized agreement that this board can use. We are very close. I had heard back from Blackboard representatives, I think at 4 o'clock today, so hopefully by tomorrow, we will have something to put on your agenda. But that's, that's what's going on. It's a, it's, I won't call it a skirmish, but it's a, you know, legal disagreement at this point that we've almost got worked out, but it's the same terms and, and type of contract that you all approved in April.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on C1? C2 or C3? Ms. Owen?
If we have someone here from school nutrition, could we hear a little bit about the difference in how students are approved for their meals through direct certification or through the applicant process? Because I was thinking that it was a one or the other thing, but looking at the contract, it talks about both.
Ms. Foster, are you going to talk to us? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, direct certification students are those who are pre-qualified for benefits because they receive some type of service from the state, whether that be SNAP or TANF, or if they're considered homeless, migrant, runaway, or foster. And that would be foster deemed by the state. And then, our application process is based on income. So, if they don't fall into one of those categories and then they want to apply for benefits, they have to supply their income information.
Okay, thank you. I think there's been some confusion at some schools. They thought they had to direct certify and that they couldn't apply otherwise.
So, our CEP schools typically, all we look at is direct certification information because that's all we have to have to qualify them for community eligibility. But if it's not a CEP school, they can either be directly certified or apply for benefits through our income application.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Community eligibility provision. We have 47 in our district, and they're usually the highest need schools in, in school districts. And it's schools where all the children are, can eat at no cost. Direct certification.
Is it that you have a high enough percentage at that school that it qualifies them, or what?
Yes. So, a school has to be at least 40% directly certified to qualify for that. We group ours all together to increase that percentage for the district, but for an individual school to apply, they have to be at least 40% directly certified.
Thank you. Any other discussion on two or three? C4, five, or six? Okay, yes, Mr. Norman?
Yeah, I don't know who's going to answer questions about Great Schools. I guess it's John. Any other, I do have another question. Thank you, John. You may have already stated this, but I, I just wanted a little more pointed discussion, I guess, of why the change. I don't, why, why exactly are you all going, changing your name?
Sure.
And apparently, you're changing the structure
Sure.
under which Great Schools is operating. So, I just wanted to try to get some information.
Yeah, yeah. So, in regards to the structure, both boards for Great Schools Partnership and Project Grad, both were looking at what can we do within our community to create a sustainable path for educational support long-term? So, like, we wanted something long-term that would help our entire community. And it didn't make sense to have essentially two fundraising streams, you know, sources trying to go after funding for very similar programming and very similar strategies to support education within the same community. And so, through that process, we actually, if you rewind the clock about six, seven years ago, Project Grad and Great Schools Partnership entered into a supporting organization, relationship already. So, there were already structurally some things that involved where these two entities were involved with each other. By definition, you know, the last year at this time, the Great Schools Partnership President was, by definition, in the charter, the Project Grad Board Chair. Great Schools Partnership did a lot of the fundraising for Project Grad. So, there were a lot of things that were crossover already, and this was a way for our two entities to say, hey, look, is this, you know, we had this conversation determining the relationship. Is this a time for us to go our separate ways? Is this a time for us to kind of come together? What, you know, I think there were six different options that they looked at through this transition. There was a task force. We had some school representation on that as well. As you know, with Great Schools Partnership, we actually have, historically, we have had, our positions of almost every one of our board members are ex officio board members. So, it's, they hold some other role, and that makes them a board member. So, by default, the superintendent sits on the, had sat on the Great Schools Partnership Board. The school board chair sat on there. Both mayors sit on there. So, it was, it was all position, positionally based. As we looked at the new structure going forward, we want to make sure that we opened it up not to just positions. So, we still have some of the key positions that, when you look at KnoxEd's board structure, the first five positions are the, are similar ones. We've got Superintendent Thomas is there. We've got both, both Knoxville City and County Mayors. The school board chair is there. and County Mayors, um, the school board chair is there, um, as well, and the county commission chair is there. So those are the five kind of ex officio positions that we'll keep there. And if, at any point, I'm boring you to death, like, there's a whole bunch of information here. We had a whole structure that is gonna kinda continue over with board support, but we wanted to also include more donor support. So this is more about a move to make sure that we're sustainable long-term. Uh, we were able to open up a few spots, um, within the board structure of Knox Ed to allow us to kinda really make sure that we're sustainable long-term. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Uh, I guess another question regards funding. So in terms of how funding exists now, I mean, uh, compared to what it was, I mean, what will the structure be funding-wise?
Yep.
Funding, I mean, we, the school board sent you money, which went straight to, to Grad, right? It was basically a, you were a pastor.
So I'll separate those into two things. So Great Schools Partnership, um, is a public-private partnership. Uh, about half of the funding comes from public entities, which is primarily, um, the county government. So the county government gives about two and a half million historically, um, the city government gives about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars historically, um, and then the rest of that is raised publicly, uh, so, or, you know, going to the, to private donors, um, to, to raise that money. And that has been the responsibility of the president of, uh, Great Schools Partnership historically. Um, when you look at Project Grad, again, the responsibility, it, Project Grad is the one that had money flowing for, everything from Great Schools Partnership, there was money flowing to you guys, if that makes sense, um, or services that were flowing to you guys. Project Grad, on the other hand, had money coming from you guys, and again, the history behind that, that's, you guys have been there and seen that. There, that still exists, and that MOU still exists, I think it's seven hundred thousand dollars, um, uh, that comes, that will come, historically, has come through Great Schools Partnership to Project Grad, and now it's just to the same entity, if that makes sense. So, and again, the rest of those dollars are raised privately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Schumacher?
Hi, John.
Hey.
Thank you for coming. So the money now that, um, uh, whatever that amount might be that Knox County Schools, um, decides to, um, contribute to the pot... Will go to the pot now, or is that money still specifically designated?
It's still specifically designated to Project Grad, and that's, that was part of the thing. There is the ability within this new structure for entities, whether that's the government or whether that's private entities, to designate specific funding. But the negotiations through this process and this transfer into Knox Ed was that that seven hundred thousand dollars would be earmarked specifically for Project Grad to honor the MOU and the contract that you guys have with Project Grad. And so that Project Grad contract will continue, um, it just will continue under the name Knox Ed, because we're using the same federal EIN number.
And is there two more years on, on?
Oh, that's a good question. Three more years.
Three more years, all right.
Yeah.
So after that time, then, if the board, you know, and I would imagine that we certainly would support, um, I was gonna say Great Schools Partnership, but it's...
Knox Ed.
Knox Ed. Then, um, uh, we can still, we, we can still have a specific designee, or we can say, you all take it and use it.
Right.
However...
And the idea behind this, again, is that this isn't something that should be, hopefully, as we work with you guys, this is more of a relational-based thing where we're working with you. We already work hand-in-hand with your staff and, and spend a lot of time with the executive team and, and throughout the schools, the community schools, and all that stuff.
I know.
But hopefully, we'll even do that more so with you guys as well. We've been trying over the past couple of years to make sure that we invite you all to, if we have teacherpreneur grants, or we have whatever there might be, that we're doing stuff in the school, that we have you guys part of that as well. Um, and I hope that that would be a, a conversation that would be developed at the Knox Ed board meetings, because, again, the school board chair, by definition, will sit on the Knox Ed board and have a, have a voting position there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And you've always, really, you have always done a great job with that, community schools. I mean, they, the, um, campus managers, whatever you're calling them now, um, have always been very good to reach out to us individually and, and, you know, invite us for things as well as, as, as you have. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you for what you all do...
Thank you.
...to help this community.
I have one little question.
Yeah.
Are y'all's email addresses changing?
Yes, they will.
Can we get to Ms. Hill, maybe, for all of us, just the main contacts? That would be probably helpful for all of us to update our contacts and everything.
Absolutely, yeah, we can, we can connect that through, I guess, through Terry, is that?
Yeah. I mean, I'm Ms. Hill, I'm sorry, I was coding.
Okay.
I was a little confused.
Same, same first name, right?
Same first name, wrong last name, sorry.
It's all good. Any other questions, or?
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any discussion on C7, eight, or nine? C10, 11, or 12? C13 or 14? Okay, now we will go to Board Policy 7A. Any discussion? Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you. Yes, I have just a quick question. So I know that we are suspending this policy for the sake of COVID, which I fully support, and I thank you for that. I'm just curious, what, what would be the, what's the cost if we just disregarded the, the full amount? Like, what's the full amount?
Yeah, let me, Ms. Satterfield, it's okay, let me call Mr. Oaks. Uh, I know we have a budgeted amount, but, uh, I'm not sure what that amount is. I think Russ probably has it in his memory bank.
As of today, uh, delinquent accounts we have are just more than a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's roughly what it runs, uh, on an annual basis. And Brett, jump in, correct me if I get this wrong, what, what we normally see this time of year when we turn out for collection is that we'll see some, uh, marginal, uh, decrease in that number. We may pick up fifteen or twenty thousand additional dollars, but it's still a significant hit to, uh, the general purpose budget each year. And if I remember correctly, Ron, we've been budgeting, uh, in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, to, uh, cover that expense.
Thank you. Any other discussion of the Board Policy 7A? Okay, Grants. Eight A or B? Grant C or D? Grants? Seven, eight E or seven, eight F? Eight G? Okay, moving on to Contracts. Nine A. Okay, now we're gonna move on to regular agenda items. Regular agenda item 10A. 10B, does Mr. Oaks want to, um, let us know about this? Um, as y'all know, this was on the, moved from the agenda last week, and, um, we're waiting, I think, on some information.
Uh, yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we, uh, this was deferred last month to this month because the county had asked us to hold on it until they completed a traffic study, and that, uh, study's supposed to be completed by the end of this week. I talked to Mr. Snowden this morning, and he was expecting to get a report on Friday. So we'll have that. We wanted to have this on the agenda, uh, so that, uh, if we need to do something different, we can make that decision before the voting meeting, you know, and if, if it's to pull it off, uh, if that is the will of the board, uh, then, based on what the traffic study is. I don't know, uh, or have any inkling at this point where, what's gonna come back with the traffic study, or what the county will find supportable, uh, off of that, uh, study. We are at a point right now, though, that, uh, if we elect not to take an action on this, uh, this month, we are, uh, uh, in danger of not being able to open, uh, this school in, in the fall of twenty twenty-two, just because of the timelines. And, and also, uh, right now, we've got, uh, within this contract, uh, a, uh, provision that we will close on it by the thirtieth of June. And, uh, even where we stand today, even if, if the board decides they wanna go forward with it, uh, we may have to go back and, uh, and renegotiate that closing date on the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. 10C. Okay, Public Forum, we have no one registered for Public Forum this week, so we will go on to Board Forum. Mr. Kelly?
I'll miss you all so much. I don't know, board, board, that didn't sound very convictful, um, but it's been, it's been a pleasure over the last year, getting to know all of you all and getting to see how the Board of Education works, and I really appreciate this experience, and I hope to keep in touch with all of you all. Um, I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed that I'm going to school in the fall at Vanderbilt, but, um, if not, I'll be around, so, thank you all for everything. You've been such a blessing, and I look forward to our paths crossing in the future.
Ms. Satterfield?
No.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Norman? Ms. Hill? Ms. Bowens? No. Okay, that concludes our meeting, and thank you very much.